K L T V sound check, K L T V sound check.
Morning everyone, welcome to the Tuesday 9:00 AM public meeting of the B O C C. If you're, we'll start out with the flag salute if you want to rock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, just for all.
Okay, I will ask Mr. Mortson to review the minutes from last week.
Good morning, everyone. As usual, I reviewed the minutes of the activities last week and I moved to approve those minutes.
You have a motion to approve the minutes? Any questions, corrections, concerns? I see none. I call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion passes. We'll go down through consent agenda today. One item to note, I do need be cognizant at 9:30 we have a public, public hearing on amendments to the 2023 budget. So I'll just be aware of that at that time. Under consent agenda, agreements, contracts, beards. We have a contract with hyper reach for a notification system to send messages via multiple channels to recipients in Calis County. This is renewal of a three-year contract. The dates run from January 24th through December of '26. Cost of that is $22,744, of which Pacific Core reimburses $18,000. So the actual cost to the county is a little under $5,000. Another agreement with an appraisal firm to help help with public works when they have the need. We have a facilities use agreement with Community Integrated Health Services LLC. Gives them entry and temporary use of common office space in the courthouse when they're over there doing some of their work. And then we have a final cost report for the Klammer River Road covert project. If you remember, earlier in the year, we had the ability time-wise, just the way our schedules worked out for the county to replace a covert. I think there was two on the list. We got to one instead of sending that covert out to bid. And this is one of those, and this is closing that out. We replaced this Klammer River covert for, you can see the dollar amount, $72,444.95. The estimated, if we would have sent that out to bid, it'd been $160,000. So by the county having the time to to do that, and we can do that every so often, we can't do it all the time is what I'm I'm hearing. But we were able to get that project done and do it at a more cost effectively than than bidding it out. Board correspondence, letter dated 9/19/23 from Mike Moss regarding resignation from an employee. Federal Energy Regulatory Commissioner, a letter for regarding dam safety inspection follow-up on Swift number one. Yale and Merwin Projects, and a letter dated 10/3 of 2023 to Daryl State and reappointing him to the Veterans Advisory Board. It is three-year term, or excuse me, this four-year term expires October of 2027. And then we have vouchers in the amount of $28,825,352.74. Do you have questions or?
Item number three, Community Integrated Health Services LLC. What are they doing with counting facilities and what is their purpose?
The, oh, did you want to answer that? The Community Integrated Health Services is the child of the Behavioral Health Office. They're located up in Centralia, or is it Chahalas?
Chahalas.
Chahalas, thank you. And what they do, they're, they're really a crisis team. They're just part of the general mental health or behavioral health system. When folks go to jail, different rules start applying, and CIHS has taken it upon themselves to absorb the effort to maintain treatment while an individual's in jail. That puts them in this area.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday nine AM public meeting of the B O C C. If you're, we'll start out with a flag salute if you want to rock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, just for all.
Hey, I will ask Mr. Mortensen to review the minutes from last week.
Good morning, everyone. As usual, I reviewed the minutes of the activities last week and I move to approve those minutes.
You have a motion to approve the minutes. Any questions, corrections, concerns? I see none. I call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion passes. We'll go down through consent agenda today. One item to note, I do need be cognizant at nine thirty, we have a public, public hearing on amendments to the two thousand twenty-three budget. So I'll just be aware of that at that time. Under consent agenda, agreements, contracts, beers. We have a contract with hyper reach for a notification system to send messages via multiple channels to recipients in Calis County. This is a renewal of a three-year contract. The dates run from January twenty-fourth through December of twenty-six. Cost of that is twenty-two thousand seven twenty-two, of which Pacific Corp reimburses eighteen thousand. So the actual cost to the county is little under five thousand dollars. Another agreement with an appraisal firm to help help with public works when they have the need. We have a facilities use agreement with Community Integrated Health Services LLC. Gives them entry and temporary use of common office space in the courthouse when they're over there doing some of their work. And then we have a final cost report for the Klammer River Road culvert project. If you remember, earlier in the year, we had the ability, time-wise, just the way our schedules worked out for the county to replace a culvert. I think there was two on the list. We got to one. Instead of sending that culvert out to bid, and this is one of those, and this is closing that out. We replaced this Klammer River culvert for, you can see the dollar amount, seventy-two thousand four forty-four ninety-five cents. The estimated, if we would have sent that out to bid, it'd been a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So by the county having the time to do that, and we can do that every so often, we can't do it all the time is what I'm hearing. But we were able to get that project done and do it at a more cost effectively than bidding it out. Board correspondence. Letter dated nine nineteen twenty-three from Mike Moss regarding resignation from an employee. Federal Energy Regulatory Commissioner. A letter for regarding dam safety inspection follow-up on Swift number one. Yale and Merwin Projects and a letter dated ten-three of two thousand twenty-three to Daryl State and reappointing him to the Veterans Advisory Board. It is three-year term, or excuse me, this four-year term expires October of two thousand twenty-seven. And then we have vouchers in the amount of two million eight twenty-five, three fifty-two, and seventy-four cents. Do you have questions or? Yes, Steve.
Item number three, Community Integrated Health Services LLC. What are they doing with counting facilities and what is their purpose?
The, oh, did you want to answer that? The Community Integrated Health Services is the child of the Behavioral Health Office. They're located up in Centralia. Or is it Chahalas?
Chahalas.
Chahalas, thank you. And what they do, they're they're really a crisis team. They're just part of the general mental health or behavioral health system. When folks go to jail, different rules start applying and C I H S has taken it upon themselves to absorb the effort to maintain treatment while an individual's in jail. That puts them in this area and they would like to have a place, I guess, where they can occasionally hang their hat and conduct some of the business.
Hello, Savannah Clement Public Services. So Commissioner Mortenson explained the background very well. Regarding this lease agreement, specifically any entity that wants to utilize county or tax owner space, we want to enter into an agreement with, and that's all that this is memorializing. And they do not pay any rent, so we just wanted to make sure that the terms of them using this space as needed with no office fixtures, no telephone lines, no you know, hardware that's established there, that we just had this in writing and that the board agreed with it. So that's the intent.
Do their personnel include M D psychiatrists or P H D psychologists?
Not to my knowledge. I think it's more of like a service coordinator or a social coordinator of some kind, but I don't believe that they are what you just described.
So they have no professional certification?
The organization, C I H S, everybody that practices there has either a B S, but I think mostly have an have a masters. I don't know about any P H Ds.
Or M Ds.
You?
So this is, this organization provides mental health, mental health counseling for customers that are eligible for Medicaid. The problem is when they go to jail, they lose insurance coverage. And this agency believes that they should be able to continue offering the mental health services. They're not expecting to be compensated. They understand that when they're in jail, that it's not a fee for service that they're obtaining. But their commitment is to continue the mental health counseling that this patient had before entering jail. They just need office space in order to facilitate that. So whatever the counselor is that's tied up with them is going to be you know, certificated.
So they have no.
Required to have credentials.
Yeah.
But they have no professional board certification as a doctor or a psychologist.
Their staff works under the direction of, you know, a medical officer. They all have that, but the doctor's not working down here, to my knowledge. They also have an office downtown in on Fifteenth Avenue.
Well, as my late father used to say, always read the sheepskin on the wall of the medical professional.
We hit. Who has it, Randy? We had, Rin, did you have a comment?
Yes, it was, it was me with my hand up. This this position is funded through the True Blood Settlement. The, which was related to the wait times at Western State Hospital. I believe it's a masters level licensed mental health professional that is doing this right now. It's a reentry essentially, for the most part. They're getting people ready to release into the community, getting, you know, housing and all of that settled.
And really, our only part in it is we're giving them a a place to land and talk with their clients. Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Can you elaborate a little bit on item one? And I guess I want to talk about the correspondence a little bit about the dam safety report. But number one, you said that Pacific Corp reimburses part of that?
Yeah, I don't know if I know all the details on it. I know that.
Larry's here.
Larry's here?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Good morning, Commissioners. Larry Henbry with Calis County Emergency Management. So question? Sorry, what was?
I'm just, what, what part does Pacific Corp play in that contract?
Through a FERC decision, Federal Emergency Regulatory Commission. The dams on the Lewis River are to provide to CRESSA, which is Clark County's version of emergency management and Calis County Emergency Management. Funding for this type of system, not in totality, but six thousand of the seven thousand five hundred dollar annual fee.
So basically, this system is designed around Pacific Corp's needs in Calis County?
No, this is, this is for us to utilize. They just have to provide funds. We selected the company. We selected the system. And we are able to send out notifications as we do throughout the year. We have fifty thousand minutes annually on our contract, of which we generally use between twenty-five and forty thousand. We have an agreement that should we go over those amounts, we are able to purchase additional minutes. It doesn't just go away or shut off.
Who decides when that system is in necessary to use it?
Emergency responders request us to activate that system. So law enforcement, fire service, public works, and we also work with the National Weather Service and we determine when those notifications go out for the National Weather Service. Although you can sign up for emergency alerting through the National Weather Service independently.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add, in mill towns, often there is a a big old pole and on the top of it, there are horns blaring to get that alert the public that is near the area of a catastrophe of some kind. So it's a it's an alert system. And in this case, it's a phone call to everybody?
It's a three-tiered system. We can do the phone calling, which is geo-targeted to the areas identified by the emergency response. We have the WEA that we're able to utilize, which is the Wireless Emergency Alert System, which they will be testing tomorrow nationally. And they have the.
How do we know? How do we, how do we get to see that if I'm at home? How do I know that's been?
So there's, there's two. There's the WEA, which is off of the cellphone tower. So on your cellphone will be a message that will say, this is a test of the emergency alert system. I'm paraphrasing. I don't, I didn't bring that with me, but yes, there there will be specific wording and it does say test. And then there will be the E A S, which is the Emergency Alert System, which is what you will see on your TV screens with the interruption of your favorite program, which it always happens at that time, and will also be over the radios throughout the country. Should there be significant weather events tomorrow? They have set an alternate day of the eleventh to do the test. Also of interest, just to let you know, on ten nineteen, October nineteenth, is the great shakeout. And on that day, the state of Washington will be doing the same test for their system. It is a scheduled test annually. They will be doing that at ten nineteen AM as well for the state of Washington. And then we do quarterly tests for Calis County. And ours will be, our next one is in the first week or two of November.
So it goes, it's going out by telephone, by email, by how many different?
It does not go out by email, but it does go out by telephone or text. So you can get a phone call or a text message, or you can get both. There are notifications that go out via radio and there are notifications that go out via the television stations as well. Depends on the level of the emergency as to which tool we utilize. Most of our incidents here in Calis County have been requests from the emergency response agencies. And they have very specific parameters that they utilize, they give us, and then we draw the map. We develop the message based on the words that they give us. Some of those words might include shelter in place or evacuate immediately. And to learn about when it's clear to return, we will notify you this way.
Okay, I can see some million questions I could make out of that, but thank you. That's good.
Absolutely.
But Pacific Corp's involvement, of course, is part of their licensing agreement from the feds to provide emergency response in case there's a problem up the Lewis River.
If you remember, they also provide some cover cost of a couple deputies up there during certain times of year, too.
I think, I think Larry, one of the last emergencies we used was when there were forest fires up out of Lewis River. I think about a year ago, if I remember correctly, for some of the folks living in the remote communities up there.
Well, actually, we are, for two thousand twenty-three, we have a balance of two thousand twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-four minutes. We have utilized the system several times this year. Generally, they are shorter, two hundred to four hundred minute type alerts. And the maximum was a four thousand two hundred and five-minute alert, which was a large area that had to be alerted, probably due to a fire. Most of our alerts are law enforcement related and requested through law enforcement. And there are smaller incidents, but could be anywhere, some type of police activity.
Steve, you mentioned another question about the notice from FERC. And that's, they do regular safety inspections, and they did. And that letter, if you paged through on the website, the letter indicated that they had no concerns. Everything is just fine at Merwin and at Swift Creek. But at Yale, where there's been some remodeling and some construction going on, they noticed that some riprap was, had been moved and needed to be replaced. And they worked that out with Pacific Corp. That's the kind of notice that they're providing to make sure that we feel assured that that things are being done properly up the valley.
Okay.
I'd like to comment. Also, the, we get two letters a week, maybe more on average from FERC on that. So these are just continual tracking of progress and we do read through them. And if there's something we think is a real problem, we would certainly bring it up. If it's a really, really imminent problem, then he brings it up. And that takes me to my other, other comment, which is the price tag on this thing is very reasonable in my book. The complexity, for example, my cellphone's an eight-five-eight area code. How do they know I'm here? Well, they have to have all of those things built into their algorithms and I think it's a bargain.
Yeah, I can imagine if I was on vacation in Florida, am I going to get the alert if you send one out? Because I have my home address is here.
Sorry. If you have signed up for the emergency alerts, you probably would get that. So that you were aware of an emergency at your house. Now that's up to you. If it was something that we wanted to reach a large amount, we didn't have much time, we would put it out via the WEA, which is the wireless, and that would only bounce off the cell towers in the identified area.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Going, going back to the Florida question, just to illustrate the complexity. Your cellphone has a thing called an H L R. That is to say, the system has a home locating record or location record. When you are elsewhere is a V L R, a visitor location record. So his system has to decide for you, who's in Florida, do I contact you because I know you're in Florida, or do I forget it because it's an emergency here? That would probably be an option. You have to tell them, but they have to be able to orchestrate the whole thing.
Okay. Thank you.
And then one, one other, one other comment, though it may not pertain to what you're saying. It was very impressive, item number four, the Klammer River Road culvert, and it bears emphasizing, because often you hear me and a few of you saying, why is it so expensive when we contract out? And here is an example where we the original estimate was considerably higher, more than a factor of two. If it had been contracted out.
Commissioners, if I might, the, the one thing I want to make a pitch for right here is when emergency alerting started via the phone, we had mostly landlines at that time. And you folks will remember, those are the hard lines, the old Ma Bell type systems.
That's before my time.
Not the VoIP or the computer-aided telephones or the cellphones. In today's world, you need to, people, individuals need to select whether, or decide on their own whether or not they sign up for these alerts, because they will not automatically receive these alerts on the reverse call type system if they have not signed up. They can do that on the Calis County website under Department of Emergency Management. And you'll see the hyper reach icon where you can go in and sign up if you would like to receive those alerts. Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing under that. That's spot on, of course. If you get one, make sure you're, that other people in your neighborhood also realize that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve today's consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion to approve consent agenda. Last questions?
Questions, or have you already made a decision?
We've got a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
Can I comment on this emergency alert?
Yeah.
Back in the Stone Age, about nineteen ninety-six, when we had the five-hundred-year event when Calis County got inundated. I was out with the guard at Willow Grove. I was down on the Lewis River with the guard. And cellphones were new. And immediately, when you have an event like this, having witnessed it myself and having worked with Captain Henbry in District Two back in the Stone Age, immediately cellphone towers get overloaded and you get no service. Now with this five G and texting and what do you think's going to happen if we have another five-hundred-year event? You won't get any service from the cellphone. I guarantee you that. All you got to do is go up to Abernathy Mountain and look at the forest of antennas. If they don't short, when the generators kick in, I don't know what's going to happen. We had a military radio and they were called singhars, which were totally useless. We couldn't even contact the armory here in Longview. And, and we had a lot of problems out there with boils. And then, of course, you had the landslide on I five. And I assume this is with FERC. If the dams get breached or they have overflow, is that correct?
Any of the above, I'm sure.
Well, that's a long ways up there to Yale. And it's in the canyon. So if you don't have a sat link, satellite link, you're not going to get anything on a cellphone. And it's going to be interesting tomorrow when should this had been an actual emergency, it's already too late.
Yeah, we can't do anything about the latter, but with respect to the cellphones, there there are bits of identity in the cellphone that puts a cellphone in a class. One of the classes can be emergency. And if that is activated, then I, as a non-emergency person, can try and call all day. I'm not going to be able to get through, but the emergency people will be able to get through.
So, so one of the things the hydroelectric companies are required to do, and that is, to the best of their ability, store water. And then they release it at 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 time. So, uh, that that provides us with some extra flood protection. But I do remember, I think it was in seventy-seven, when we had another high water event. And it turned out that there was miscommunication up up on the Calhoun's. And Tacoma City Light runs those two dams and that was that some of that high water was, uh, you know, their fault.
I'm.
But they've been in communication ever since, and they've tried, they've they've done a pretty good job since then, but you can't control the Columbia River any more than it already is and and the dams on the, uh, the Lewis are under under scrutiny, so.
Just like succession or sea session. I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Weber. Because you were still teaching and I was a junior in high school and I was up there watching this.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions? See now, I call for the vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. We're at nine thirty, we should take the public hearing.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. And I'm here, um, related to a resolution for amendment of the adjustment and amendment of the twenty twenty-three Callowats County budgets to increase appropriations and to account for additional expenditures and revenues. Um, the Office of Financial Management recommends, um, the Board of Commissioners approve the amendments to the twenty twenty-three Callowats County Budget, which will, as I said, will increase the budget and as well make a general fund transfer to the Internal Service Fund for Risk Management as more specifically set out in Attachment A, which was provided as part of this resolution. And the Office of Financial Management recommends a name change to a special revenue fund number sixteen zero zero one, currently known as Drug Task Force, to now be renamed Crime Reduction Team, Callowats.
Wakayakam.
I ca- Haikum Narcotics Task Force, as well as a recommendation to establish a new fund known as the Sheriff Bearcat Fund number nineteen eight oh two.
So Kathy, my understanding is really the only new money that we're dealing with is that being generated by the contributions from local governments towards the purchase of the Bearcat. The the rest of the funds that we're adjusting, we're taking out of reserves to to pay for um, some unexpected, uh, expenses that have happened during the year.
Correct.
So no, no general tax increase to to balance this particular budget.
No, there are sufficient funds to cover this budget amendment.
And and it's it's a fairly typical thing, at least three or four times a year, we kind of balance up the books to make sure that as we make decisions during the year, responding to requests from departments and and citizens that we have to have the budget author authorization to do those things. So we make those changes.
So far, my, um, first few months here, I've I've come before you three. This is my third time to amend the budget. And it's usually at the request of a department who needs to adjust their budget for unanticipated expenditures or revenues.
So one of the interesting, uh, situations, as we're looking at it, there was a the transfer of funds into the Office of Public Defense. And what we've learned from the department has is that they've had some of their lawyers leave. And they've had a real difficult time finding lawyers to hire. So the budget change was to increase professional services for contracting those those out. And then that's just part of the nature of the of the the process. We just have to be able to, uh, facilitate those changes and and expenditures.
Yep.
If I could add to that, typically, the, uh, departments, if they even have to increase the budget, their budget by a dollar, they have to come through us. So it's it's not a Wild West show out there in case somebody thinks it is.
Correct.
And we can.
And in many cases, a department will, um, officially reduce another budget to increase a different budget line item. And that requires also, um, approval by the commissioners and resolution.
Yeah. We anticipate one additional amendment, um, in January or February, because bills get paid late. And we gotta get it all squared up before the final budget is is, uh, put to bed, so to speak.
Well, we may have one early December, too. I'm I'm just.
All right.
Well, it's a in my view, it's a good check and balance system. I mean, we look at it every so often, public gets a chance to comment and on, so it's a good check and balance. Any other questions from us? I will open the public meeting for public comment.
Now, I know you're coming up on budget season because counties are on an annual budget budget, not a fiscal budget like the federal government. So I'm curious. You're transferring money from the general fund to this Bearcat Fund. How much?
Okay, um, on the Bearcat Fund, they actually have their own revenues, um, through cooperative agreements. But they've been operating under the Sheriff's Department for quite a while. And they have, uh, they're seeking to actually establish a separate fund to account for those funds because of, um, accumulating fund balance. And so the fund balance that is has accumulated over the last few years that they would like to transfer from the general fund that closed out each year. Hold on, let me get the amount. It is twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And that's an accumulation over several years.
Residual from previous county budgets.
Yes.
Now I have one question, I'm looking at the actual resolution. And I'm curious about one, two, three, whereas as the sheriff, the CRT CWNTF, as there is no longer an agreement in place covering the activities and funding provided by other counties. Now, what other funds did other counties, uh, provide?
I'm not sure that I can answer that. Um, let's see if, um, Katrina Harris is on the, um, from the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So could he please repeat the question?
Gladly. The third whereas in the original resolution has the sheriff and then the acronym for the, uh,
Yeah, Calhoun's Wakayakam Narcotics Task Force.
Oh, is that what CWNTF? Yeah, that would make sense.
Yes, sir.
As there is no longer an agreement in place covering the activities and funding provided by other counties. Now, my question is, what other funds were provided by other counties?
So part of the Calhoun's Wakayakam Narcotics Task Force was the City of Kelso, uh, Washington State Patrol, um, Wakayakam County Sheriff's Office and the Calhoun County Sheriff's Office. And that resolution has been closed, they're no longer holding that. Um, we need to still have a fund that has that acronym on it. Because for years to come, people will be paying restitution from court cases. And we need to be able to have a place to deposit those funds for years to come. And then, um, the CRT is called the Crime Reduction Team. That's what it is now called through the Sheriff's Office. So we can utilize one fund to put all the money in. But we need to formally change the name of the fund.
Okay, you named all the departments, Kelso, State Patrol, Wakayakam, Calhoun County Sheriff. What is the amount in that fund at present?
Well, that's not a super easy question without some knowledge to be able to go log in, but there's not very much. Maybe if I have to guess, seventy-five thousand dollars is in that fund. So it's not a lot of money, but the fund has to be used for the same purposes. So the money that came in from any kind of seizure, foreclosures, any of that has to be used for specific purposes of trying to, um, get drugs off the street.
So at present, according to the Budget Department, there's twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighteen cents.
That's for the Bearcat.
Okay.
That was the Bearcat.
Different fund.
So I assume these two funds are going to be combined then?
No.
No, sir.
No, there's a Bearcat Fund, and then there is a separate fund. There are RCWs that you have to keep the money separated in their own fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Katrina. Any other questions? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Pleasure. Any other questions from us? Well, I don't have any question, you have a hand up there.
Hello. I I'm sorry, I I wasn't sure if I, uh, had the floor now, is this the end of all public questions? Or is it just for this part?
Just it's just for this public hearing on the, um, budget amendment. It's it's not, we haven't opened up the public comment on everything.
Okay, no problem.
Just going through the public hearing, yeah.
Nope, no problem, I'll stay back then, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the budget amendment as presented by our Finance Director.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget amendment. Looking for hands, I see none, I call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. Back to motion items. Wind cams.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners and members of the public. Savannah Clement with Public Services. Today, I recognize I have a pretty big ask, probably the biggest ask I've ever come to the board to approve, and it is for a software solution for Public Works. Um, it's been about six years in the making of research and work that we've put into this to finally get here. Um, a little bit of history and background. I started at Public Works about six years ago, and at the time, that board, um, which there's still a couple members up here, um, had tasked us to really take a look at the accounting and finance situation at Public Works. Um, which when we found out pretty quickly, there wasn't one. Um, it's a kind of a generalized grouping of different systems, about five different systems that are utilized to try to, um, manage accounting and finance there. Um, and the reason it's so important specifically to Public Works is because we do have a state statute that guides, um, how we have to do our finances and how we have to produce our costing, uh, to the County Road Administration Board. So this isn't specific to Calhoun County necessarily, all counties in Washington State are of the same requirement. And so what we started to do was dig in, um, audit, um, figure out what we could fix at our level, um, which we did. Um, and then we recognized what we couldn't fix, what we were unable to do in-house. Um, and so to satisfy that and to ensure that we can continue to be accountable and transparent for this reporting, um, we started looking at what we currently use, which is PeopleSoft. Um, and we went, uh, did a ton of training with IT. We actually went out to bid about two years ago to try to figure out if if PeopleSoft could work for our needs. Um, unfortunately, we found out the extreme costs that were associated with trying to get that going and then recognized that we were the only, um, department that would be able to utilize that. And for the cost, uh, it was not what we would like to, we did not decide to move forward. The cost for those proposals was about three hundred and thirty thousand upwards to one point two million, um, which we were not willing to to do at that time. So we started doing some research and we started asking other counties in Washington what they utilized and what their software was to comply with these state statutes. And and we found that they used a Windcams product. And so we did several demonstrations with Windcams, recognize again that they would that they would satisfy our reporting needs, um, and build a a smaller solution for us for Public Works. Um, but we still went out to bid to see what else was out there. And those bids went out in July. And we received two proposals. One was from Windcams and one was from Tyler, um, Harris Technologies. Uh, so the Windcams bid was a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that includes implementation and maintenance. Um, so breaking that down, the software itself is approximately one hundred and one thousand dollars. That was the one upfront cost. And there was some customization implementation, um, which was eighty-eight hundred for customization and seventy-six thousand to implement. So a total one-time cost of about two hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh, there is a maintenance, uh, which is yearly maintenance of approximately twenty thousand dollars per year. So we did include in this bid award both implementation and one year of maintenance. Um, our other bid was Tyler Technologies. And they had several line items that, uh, accounted up for theirs, which was about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the other solution, um, which did not, um, which would not have satisfied our statutory requirements for reporting. So we did select Windcams. And Windcams is what we have presented today for the bid award. Um, and we were asking the board today to please approve that to move forward. Again, this is not the contract execution, it's just accepting their bid, um, that they presented in July. So, yeah.
Questions?
As I was, uh, reviewing the documents, I noticed that you had a list of other counties who had success with Windcams. And and it was an interesting range, because the largest one, I think, on the list was Pierce County, Tacoma. And one closer to our size is Island County. And and several in between. I appreciated that because, uh, some sometimes we we find ourselves sort of reinventing the wheel. And here we have experience. And I think you contacted several of the counties to get their impression of if this is a system that works well with their programs.
We did, um, we contacted quite a few counties. And some of them have been with Windcams for twenty years or more, which is a telling, a good tell that, um, it's successful there. Uh, Pierce County, we communicate with often just because, um, we, uh, go to a lot of conferences with them. So we've gotten a lot of inside information from Pierce County as well, and it's been successful there. I didn't mention, but twenty-nine of the thirty-nine counties in Washington State currently use Windcams as their software accounting for Public Works.
Yeah, you, in in my estimation, when I looked at the the work you've done on this, you've been at it for several years. You put a lot of work and thought into it. And then I just want to publicly say, appreciate that, because I think you've, uh, done the right right type of work to get to the decision you you arrived at.
So I I've I've been on this commission now, um, I'm in my eleventh year. And one of my first, I guess, complaints from departments came from a previous sheriff who said, why in the world are they charging us five hundred dollars for an oil change? And I said, that doesn't sound right to me. And over the course of several meetings, we would ask them to justify and explain that really outrageous price. And every time they came up with different answers. And it was kind of an example of how the system was really very unworkable and and came up with very unrealistic results. So thank you for getting getting into the weeds and, uh, getting it straightened out. It should be no more than four hundred dollars.
No. For a half hour.
Any, any other questions?
Now, if I understand your presentation correct, you're from Public Works.
I am.
And what's your title?
I am the Deputy Director there.
And the gentleman sitting next to you?
I'm Sean Reilly, Finance Manager for Public Works.
Now, you say the accounting system in Public Works is kind of in a jumble. Was that correct?
Our cost accounting system doesn't, technically, we don't have a software system there, um, correct. I, I would agree with that.
This is for the Commissioners. Through the grapevine, from your own employees in Public Works, who came to me, they told me there were some improprieties that bordered on criminal activity. If this be the case, then I suggest this Commission Board call in an outside investigator, possibly from the Washington Attorney General's Office. Almost in the same vein as Mr. Swanson, Commissioner Weber.
We've had nobody approach us with any of that.
Me neither. So that's news to me.
Any other questions? Just a quick one for the gentleman. You're not, has this anything to do with the, with the, uh, with the proposal at hand?
Commissioner Mortensen, this came from an employee in Public Works. And why, I, I heard it secondhand. But as your own personnel here say that there is no accounting system, I'm led to believe that there is problems in Public Works and you should call in an outside investigator, possibly the Washington Attorney General's.
So I would like to maybe clarify. So currently, there's no cost accounting software. We utilize PeopleSoft for all of our general ledger, accounts payable, journal uploads. To satisfy our project costing, we currently use Access, Excel, Laserfish, a portal system, several systems for accounting. But in regard to any accountability or financial questions that may exist or claims, I would also recommend the Washington State Auditor whistleblower online. I mean, if anybody has anything that they would like to be looked into, that's also an option. So I would recommend doing that.
Not to go further, um, this professional, this had professional certification in the Public Works Department, was asked, well, I can't go any farther than that, but it doesn't have to do with your new contract. But you should have had this on board when he was there and when Mr. Swanson was here. But it does border on the same accountability with Mr. Swanson.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract award to Windcamps as has been discussed and presented by staff. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. See no hands. I would call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you for your work on that, Savannah.
Thank you.
Uh.
Paint.
Local agency agreement.
Good morning, Susan Eugenous, County Engineer. I'm bringing forward today an increase to our local agency agreement with WashDOT for the installation and upgrade of curve warning sign project. Uh, we went out to bid for this project and opened bids on September twelfth. The low bidder is a hundred-and-eleven thousand seven-hundred dollars above what our grant award from WashDOT was initially. Uh, with working on with WashDOT as services, a federal aid project, we needed to get approval of the low bidder. And in that process, they offered an additional one-hundred-and-eleven seven-hundred to make up our difference. And this paperwork formalizes that agreement we're making with the state. Uh, the grant is for a fully funded grant, uh, for safety.
So can you share with us why the cost increase and that, which they accepted? A little bit of the complexities about.
So this grant was awarded to the county in, I believe, twenty-twenty. And in that time, since twenty-twenty, when we made the application, we go through all of the paperwork that the state has us go through, get it out to bid, uh, the cost of the signs themselves and the traffic control and other labor associated with the project has increased. As we all know, everything is going up.
So it's just basically to amend the, the agreement we had with them to reflect current costs?
Yes.
Any questions on this contract, on this amendment? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the local agency agreement supplemental two and the federal aid project perspectives with WashDOT as outlined by staff.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I see no hands. Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, a couple of quick things before we open up the public comment. There's no meeting this afternoon. We have no one-thirty meeting this afternoon. Upcoming meetings, October fourth. We have a budget workshop with technology. Uh, October tenth, we have Habitat Humanity in and, and, um, um, some more budget workshop items. As you can tell, this is budget season. October eighteenth, um, budget workshop, equipment revolving reserve. October twenty-fourth, employee excellence awards. And October twenty-fifth, uh, we have a budget workshop on the mental health tax. So with that, unless there's any additional comments from my colleagues, we'll open up to public comment. It's your, your time. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I come in high respect of your positions and the hard choices you have to make. Um, let me introduce myself. I'm a great-grandmother. My name is Carmen White, and I have volunteered in the area for sixteen years or so, working with the Pregnancy Center and helping homeless people through the church. I've followed the actions of this council through public records and the news. Your choices to delay to vote since April eighteenth to release the two-point-five million dollars for the Community House Youth Shelter is the reason I am here. Putting these funds on a back burner, waiting to see how far the state grant would go once the construction began, looking for other projects that would help, but may not necessarily include housing, looking for hard numbers, which is impossible to have at the beginning of a project, being absent from meetings, not agreeing with how the shelter director does things, are just excuses for not releasing the funds for this youth shelter. These delays only keep homeless teens on the streets suffering overdoses, being victims of that, hungry, mentally unstable, and in unsafe conditions. Every day you delay, it tells me that you don't even care that these kids are safe or not. As you are able to go home to a warm home with comfortable beds. Community House does not separate teens from their parents. Community House is doing everything to get these kids off the streets and safe. Community House will provide a safe place with caring, loving staff that will provide kind and encouraging words to build them up, not hateful, destroying words. Professional counseling, job training to give them hope for a future, tutoring to help them remain in school, and they have a student center close by. I have visited the student center and found that it provides many more opportunities, such as a workout center where they can build them physically, the ascent business where the students themselves handle the business. They make great milkshakes, hot dogs, and this gives them more job opportunities. They have an art center, game center, and many more. My question is, have you visited the student center? Have you even had one of their really good milkshakes? And the hot dogs are the best. The Morrison family has served this community for eleven years. And besides their own three children, has adopted five other children and given them the love of two parents. Have they done everything right? Have any of us? They have given their lives to help homeless and have come under death threats, persecution, have been called irrational and had to fight many battles. But they provided one thing that saved their daughter for a period of time: love, which has motivated them to keep helping the homeless under all these unthankful and scuffing situations. I knew their daughter, Mariah, through church. She was an absolutely beautiful girl inside and out. She was shy and trusting as the modeling industry and a stalker gave her medic, mental and physical destruction. She shared with me how much she loved her mom and dad as she came home to their love and help. It wasn't fentanyl that took her life. After being clean and working at the student center and helping others, it was hateful and condemning words of destruction that were spoken to her that broke her heart, filled her with pain beyond human understanding and drove her back to the drugs, which took her life. Have you ever lost a child? I have. My daughter of fifty-four years took her life because of a terrible divorce. And I'm ending here. Um, I pray that you never know that kind of pain or the pain of being hopeless. The reason you need to release those funds and maybe even reach into your own pockets to support this community, how you sheltered, is because they provide the only ingredients that will actually save these homeless youth. That is love, shelter, hope, and help. That's my request. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I apologize for, I don't know where the, yeah.
I'm a liberal Democrat. I was born one. I was raised by one. Uh, my, uh, people I looked up to were Senator DeJarnet, who taught at Ari Long High School. Uh, Representative Thompson, who ran the, uh, Calis paper up in Casserac. Uh, Ray Ryan, the late Ray Ryan. Old Colonel, late Ray Ryan, who was your assessor. Probably the most respected county official I've ever known. Uh, as Captain Henry back there, sitting in the bleachers, can attest, we've seen a lot. And we've lost people. And I've lost people. Children. It's tough when you're in the field. They trained us to control our emotions, but it doesn't work. Commissioner Mortensen, as a civics instructor sitting next to you, can attest, politics makes strange bedfellows. You know my political background, but what the fourth estate did to you was wrong. It was a workshop where public cannot comment, just has it on the Longview City Council. If you remember the public and you go to these workshops, you cannot counsel. If the fourth estate in this county wanted to see something, they should have stayed for last week's public health meeting. Now, I couldn't stay because I had work to do. I caught the last end of it and I had to chuckle because it was on STDs. Now, a former instructor who was at Ari Long, who just died, when he came back, he was my civics instructor in my senior year. I knew his background. Senator DeJarnet taught with him at Ari Long. My father knew his background and said the Longview School Board overreacted when they fired him, and they did. They didn't use common sense, especially in the height of the Civil Rights Movement. And the funny thing about that was he probably did more good to stop STDs in this county than anybody with his condom project. Now, you gotta realize his background. He was in the Navy. He was on the forest stall. That sailor suit attracts them like flies. So he knew what he was talking about. Mr. Kip didn't, and he was later fired for incompetence, I believe, at Columbia River. So he was right about that. He monitored two or he, um, well, monitored is not the word, but he, uh, shepherd two Marines that I knew. Uh, one of them retired in Korea, dumbballed and fairly. Kind of interesting characters. They were his aides. And I hope they took some of his knowledge with them into the Corps because they're gonna need it. So in closing, like I said, uh, politics make strange bedfellows. I'm a liberal Democrat and I was raised by a Marine and a wave who were schoolteachers. I support you on your decision because it was correct. Not the fourth estates, they didn't even know what the hell was going on. But I support your decision.
Any other comments? One clarification I, I will make, we do allow comment in, in, in workshops. Sometimes I, because we don't usually have a crowd, I forget to ask, but we do allow comments in workshops. Any other comments?
We have a hand up.
I have a hand up too. Let, Steve, yeah, let me get to that because there was a gentleman that was trying to.
Yeah. Hey, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Commissioners, thank you so much for, uh, the, the opportunity, your willingness to hear comments from the public. Um, it is encouraging to know that we are given the ability to give input into the people who are making decisions on our behalf. Uh, with that, I'd like to make a request that my comments remain anonymous, as is my right under RCW forty-two dot thirty dot zero four zero. I'd like to call attention to.
Are you still?
The chat.
The chat.
We. I don't know what happened there, but we lost the gentleman. I would say.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me again?
Yeah.
Thank you. Where'd you lose me?
I would like to say.
I would like.
Oh, gosh. So far back. Okay, so first thing, I'd like to request that my comments remain anonymous. As is my right under RCW four-two dot thirty dot zero four zero. I'd like to call attention to the linked video there in the chat. And ask that it be included in the transcript of this meeting at the board's discretion. I'd also request that this video be played in open view for the public. I am not looking for a response at this time and intend to exit this meeting after it is played. Thank you.
Did he send you a link for video, I guess?
You feel free not to play it. If you don't, I'd like you to just include it in the transcript. Thank you.
I guess I would like to respond to the concerns about the monies not being sent to the youth shelter and say that. Unfortunately, there's in the current. Situation, current. Status of our society. There are deaths that are happening. And dealt with on a personal basis, people's feelings get hurt. However, as stewards of public funds. Then I would expect you gentlemen, as unemotional as possible, to evaluate. The credibility of those programs that are asking for money, asking for funds. Don't just throw it out there because of emotional pleas. And regardless of how emotional it gets. It needs to be backed off to what is the proper business decision to protect those public funds and to use them wisely. That honest evaluation should be done as unemotional as possible. And yeah, it's great if we can help people, but a hand up, not a handout. And there's a definite value in being able to tell the difference. So I would hope that through the course of action that you guys have to go through. In evaluating where you send money, especially in programs that are designed to try and help other people. In their situation, drugs or alcohol or whatever it is. That you look at them with a good, both eyes open and evaluate. Not just how good it looks, but how good does it work? What is their their success rate? I sympathize with the gentleman that lost his daughter. I read the newspaper article. I wasn't here for the hearing. I can only say that, you know, I would think. I I would assume that the gentleman gave his daughter the absolute best care he possibly could. At least as good as he would give anybody in his program. And it's most unfortunate that he lost his daughter. That's a, that's a heartache that. None of us can share with him unless we went through something similar. But a heartache is not what you judge, given money away on. It's the effectiveness of a program. Thank you.
Let me do a quick check if there's any. Yeah, come on up.
You've got a hand up.
I got a hand up too. Let me take. I'll take this hand and then then we'll bring you up, okay? Joe? Go ahead. Make sure you're unmuted and you should be good to go. Oh, I got two hands up. Shannon is, okay.
Is that my turn? Okay. Good morning. I wanted to talk on the subject of the community house and the youth. This last summer or this summer, actually, we had a stout, ascend, ascend. We had to send youth come out to H and A twice a week. We had the middle school students and we had the high school students come out. And they worked in our garden and they were learning. How to garden and other things that they could do. For life. You know, like life experiences. And one of the young men that I was able to meet, he was, he was a middle schooler. He came in. Had to use the restroom and one of the gentlemen that that works with them came in with him. He went into the bathroom, came back out and this young boy goes, you have. You have art supplies. I said, I do. I I have an art club and I and I teach art. Could I have one, please? I said, yes, you may. And I ended up giving him two. These are, these are young. Young children. That need to have people to. Pay, not just pay attention to them, but to know that they and to speak truth into them. And to realize that these kids need more than just to be shunned or, you know, cause these are, these are kids that are homeless. The majority of those kids that were coming to our center were homeless. And it broke my heart. It broke my heart that this young boy, all he wanted was just. Just wanted something to paint on. That's all he wanted. These are, these are programs that are vital. And I have a heart for our youth at, that's, that's why I work. My. My hours at H and A. That's why I want to have a tutoring, a free tutoring center. I want the the youth in our area to know that they have a safe place to go to. Because of the rise of drugs. And unless you've lost somebody. To drug addiction, you don't know what it feels like. My husband and I had no idea that his cousin moved. Down the street from us. We knew that she was in the area, but then we thought she moved back home, which would be Idaho, the Panhandle. But she was down the street from us, struggling with addiction. And she hung herself. And we had no idea. You cannot tell somebody. That they could not have helped their loved one. Because it hurts. We had to go and clean the room and take the rope down. I don't want to see any of our youth go through that. I don't want to see any of our youth walking in that. I respect you gentlemen. I respect each and every one of you. But you have to understand the pain. That families go through when they are in this situation. And I want those youth to have hope. They need to have hope. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Did you want to come up? Yeah, come on up.
My name's Rhonda Black and this, can you guys hear me?
Is a bright green light on? I'm just checking.
Yes.
Okay, good, okay.
Okay, can you can hear me? Okay, so this is my first commissioner meeting, so I'm not sure how it goes, but this is a different subject. So is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so my name is Rhonda Black and I am a founder along with my husband for a veteran nonprofit called Heaven, Helping Every Veteran in Need. H E V I N. We started that nonprofit in two thousand and eighteen.
Excuse me, could you go a little slower for me? Audio is a bit hard.
Yes. I get nervous and speak very fast, so I'll slow down. So my husband Rich, who is a veteran, we started a nonprofit for veterans in two thousand and eighteen. And it's called Heaven, which is spelled H E V I N. And it stands for helping every veteran in need. And our mission and purpose was, we had a friend who was a veteran and he needed some help. Because he was self-employed and he was gonna have hip replacement surgery. And that surgery was gonna make him unable to work for a couple of months. And they, and his wife received social security, so they were nervous about their finances. And my husband and I were like, it seems like if people knew this veteran needed some money that they could help him. That they would just all pitch in and help. And so we tried to look for resources and. Other than the Veteran Relief Fund, we didn't see anything out there. So we thought. What if we started a nonprofit and we bridged the gap between all of the community resources and. And the need, because we don't want to reinvent the wheel and there's a lot of wonderful community resources out there. But there are bridges to be gapped and our heart was for veterans. So we started the nonprofit and we had no idea how bad the need was. So recently I heard that there was seven hundred thousand something dollars. In the relief fund for veterans right now and that the money isn't being spent. And my worry is that I heard also that the money might be, there was talk and I don't know the rules, cause I'm not. A county official and I haven't searched the RCWs enough to know the rules. But I've heard that they're trying to put the money, and I'm guessing that's the commissioners, I'm not sure who they is. Into the general fund. And I don't know what that means for veterans, but I know that the money is needed for veterans. And my worry is that there isn't enough access for the, to get to the fund. And I say that knowing that you have paid rents to four organizations to help veterans access the fund. But when I try to refer, it's hard for veterans to access those places. And so I just wanted to compare your flyer. It's on the website. If anybody wanted to go to it, it's public information. That in twenty twenty-two, Calitz County Relief Fund helped. Fifty-four veterans and the money that they spent on the veterans was thirty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that Heaven in twenty twenty-two helped ninety-six veterans. And we spent a total of fifty thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. So the money is necessary. We could help so many more people, but we don't have the money. And if we had seven hundred thousand dollars, we would help a lot of veterans, trust me. And I know that there's a lot of rules, there's bylaws, it's very black and white, who can be helped on the relief fund and who can't. Unfortunately, there is a rule that says that Heaven, our organization, who's tried and true and. Has very transparent money and very low overhead. Can't access that fund. We can't, and access the fund, just for clarification, doesn't mean we get, we get money from that fund. It means we assist a veteran to apply for the money. And we take that application to the county and say, here's an application. We vetted them, we've checked their DD two fourteen, we checked their identification. We've checked their income. We know what your rules are and what can be paid and can't be paid. And this is what we need to be paid, because if we could share resources. How it's the setup to be shared, we could help so many more veterans. And and a lot of people don't know about Heaven, our organization. But I think more people know about Heaven than know about the county fund. There's just no advertising about it. I just, people don't know about it. And I try to get everybody to go to the fund. A lot of organizations will come to us for deposits. Because the fund doesn't pay for the deposit. If the the bylaws have that you have to have, be going to school or work. To get your automobile paid for, like repairs. But elderly does deserve to drive too, and they have to go, everybody, no matter what your medical history is. Needs to go to the doctor at some point, needs to buy groceries, needs to go visit their grandchild. They served our, our, our country. They deserve to drive. And so I broke down what we spent last year. Housing was twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And the county spent sixty-five thirty. For transportation, we spent, that was our biggest thing, because we also, when we repair. Somebody's vehicle, we don't just repair their vehicle, we get their tabs renewed and we give them. A six months insurance, because we just get them the basic cheap insurance and we go through. Like a veteran organization for insurance and it's usually around three hundred dollars for the six months. And. Because we don't want them to be illegal drivers. So we do our due diligence. We don't just fix a car. We get them legal. Because if they get a ticket, it's just they spiral down so fast. So, you know, we're just, we're doing our due diligence. But we would just like to have access to that county fund. So that we could share those expenses and it make, and that seems fair to me. That doesn't seem unreasonable. I don't want the county money. I don't want the seven hundred thousand. Well, I do, I want seven hundred thousand, but. I don't want to take the county's money, but I don't want that money to go to a general fund. And I don't want that money to not be being spent, because it needs to be spent. Burial costs. I bet your burial, I bet your fund would go up a lot if people knew they could come to you for the cremations. People don't know. We don't get a lot of requests for that, but when we do, we do refer them and hope that they come over here, because we don't have the funds for burials. But I mean, that's a, would be a really great way to spend the money. And I don't think. The counties is under, their car repairs is under miscellaneous. And it's under the miscellaneous for the county was spent fifteen hundred dollars last year on the miscellaneous. I don't think that cell service, cell phone bills are paid underneath of your bylaws that I could find. And that is absolutely necessary, because if we want them to get jobs, they need their phone bills to be paid. I had a phone call from a, a veteran service center asking me if we could pay a veteran's phone bill, because she didn't think that she could. Under the county relief fund. And that's just, it doesn't make any sense. And I am going to be going to the. The Veteran Advisory Board meeting on the next one to talk to them as well. But I really wanted to talk to you guys. I know that the RCW won't allow us to, and I don't know if it's RCW, if it's a county rule, what it is. Heaven, the reason Heaven can't access the funds is because we're not a nationally recognized veteran service organization. But neither is Calitz Veteran Service Organization. You know, the service center, they are not either. They're umbrellaed under one. I found that out from the county. I asked county officials, how could we be? They said they would look into it. And so I just wanted to introduce myself to you three men, so that when the advisory board comes back to you to, to tell you anything, you'll know who I am. You'll know that my heart is about veterans. I want you guys to also know, we, we got a grant in twenty nineteen. And we hired somebody, because I, I felt like I was dying. I was working three jobs and I wasn't gonna be able to keep it up. And we hired somebody and the, we do, so we have a payroll overhead, but that payroll expense. For twenty twenty-two was thirty-two thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. And. And that is that our money for that's running out, so from that grant, so. We've actually dipped into that grant, which was a very flexible grant and we've spent it on better, helping veterans, because that's where our hearts are. So we'll be back to a volunteer basis pretty soon and which is fine with us. We're not gonna quit this, no matter what. We'll, we fundraise, we have a car show every year. We, we do a lot of things in the community. We want to do more, but mostly I just wanted you guys to know who I am, that my heart's in the right place. That I would love for you to try to research, I don't know how or what I would do to be able to access that fund. And like I said, accessing the fund is not giving me money. It's allowing me to fill out an application with a veteran. And hand it to the county. It's allowing me to fill out an application with a veteran and hand it to the county for a paycheck to split the money.
There was a lot you said, and I think probably the best uh or the, the, the. The instant highlight is, uh there is no legal way that we could take that seven hundred K and stick it into general fund anyhow. So that's misinformation. What is going on is the Veterans Advisory Board has very recently revised. Some of the allocations it gives for burial or food or rent and so forth. They've done a remarkably good job and we count on them to. Uh, to actually tell us what should be done. I don't think any of us ever told them what should be done. On their current discussions, anything and everything that is legal is, is on the table. I don't know of any constraints that we have, so, oh no, we can't do this or can't to do that. The uh, the question I would have asked you quite some time ago was, have you gone in to speak to the Veterans Advisory Board? You know, retired Judge Stonier is the chairman and uh. He's got a very good group of people around him and I, I have nothing but respect uh. For them. Does it bother us that, that we've accumulated seven hundred thousand? A lot of odd things have happened over the course of the, of, of the COVID. And uh that's just meaning to say if we accumulated funds, it was unintentional. Uh it is our desire to have somewhat of a reserve, but it's much less than that. And we are in the board, I should say, the, the, the Veterans Advisory Board is trying very hard to think about. How properly to use the funds for the veterans. You mentioned the service center, I assume that's the one you mean at L, L C C?
Um, no, that's Jim, um Jim Stonier's uh Cowlets Veteran Service Center, yes. And I've talked to Jim before and he told me. Um himself that he wasn't interested in having somebody with, an organization with a paid employee accessing the fund. Which I didn't understand what that means. And I have not gone to talk to the advisory board, because when I found out about this general fund. You know, rumor, I um, there hasn't been one yet, so that's, that's why I'm planning to go to this next one. But um, but before I go, I wanted to introduce myself.
Yeah, for uh, for the legal elements as well as uh what I would call the uh. Let, let me just leave it at the, at the legal elements. We have Gina James, who's a deputy director of H H S. And uh if she can figure out how to do it, she. She's the one there, so I would recommend that you go have a chat with her. I, I think we have a lot of confidence in her.
Yeah, I think those funds actually come from the Fed, don't they?
No, no.
They're, they're, they're part, part of the property tax. And I think we appointed Rich to the. The committee, I know, I know, we did that, so.
Yes, my husband's joining the committee.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm, this is, what I, I wanna be the one to make the change and come before you guys. Because I'm going to be talking to his group with him in it, so.
Yeah, well, we've, we've talked before and, and I think we're all pretty solid. These funds need to be used for veterans and now they open it up. They, it needs to be used for veterans and there's no desire and. To put it in, at least on my part, to put it into any general fund. I don't, I don't like transferred funds like that, so.
Wonderful.
One of the things I, I wanted to say first and foremost is um, thank you for the work that you've done with, for, for veterans. I know over the years, we've had a lot of discussions with some of the challenges working with many veterans. Who are in, you, you said it red best, they're really reluctant to ask for help. And that sometimes keeps the numbers down, the requests down. What it, to me, what it also speaks to is the fact that the system that we have right now, very formal. And that is kind of a turn off for some veterans. Your organization as an in, more of an informal, flexible uh organization could help meet that need. Um, so I mean, I'm, I'm all, all behind figuring out how to make sure um, uh we get. More veterans gaining access to the benefits that, that they, they re, that they are entitled to. Um, and I would, I would echo the comment, I would suggest that you meet up with Gina James. Um, s- s- some, sometimes. We have groups that have rules and those are the boundaries that they work in. And I think the message we've tried to send out is, let's change those rules a little bit. If we can do it legally, obviously, and follow the state law, to see if we can do. Uh a, a, approach things in a little bit different, thinking outside the box and how to reach out and get the message, so. Um, it's, it's great to hear, hear your interest and your, and your devotion, so thank you.
Thank you, and it's a group effort for sure. We have a wonderful board of directors and uh our community is just stood behind us, so.
Yeah, I was gonna comment, it's, it's a. I, I'm always afraid of organizations trying to. Cannibalize each other, so I, I really want Heaven and Advisory Board to. Come to a mutual understanding how best to serve the veterans and uh. Uh all we will serve basically is uh kind of a, a, a. Legal principles keeper, I guess. You know, it's gotta come from, from the, from the veterans.
So you mentioned a rumor about these relief funds being rolled over into the general fund. Uh and I, I'm not sure where you heard that from. I do know from working with the State Counties Association. They've been tossing around a concept that, that portion of the property taxes that goes to veterans' relief. Be taken outside of the one percent limitation. So that the general fund has a little bit more room to, to grow. That might have been where that started from, but it's not, it's not a shift into the general fund. So, and, and that proposal hasn't got very far, I don't think. You might be, you may come across that in Legislative Steering Committee.
Yeah, and, and at the risk of increasing on popularity, uh. We, we, we know the old saying, uh, uh, you can ruin people. Like if, if seven hundred thousand dollars were dumped on your lap right now, it might make your life a little more complicated than you think. And uh, I, that's what I like about the Veterans Advisory Board. They, they're not swayed. Uh, so I'm just saying, I wanna be careful that we don't spoil a good thing.
Yeah, I don't want seven hundred thousand dollars given to me from the county and that's not at all what I was trying to say. What I wanna say is that I want to be able to fill out an application with a veteran, so that their emergency rent could get paid. It just makes sense. It, it's, it's just silly to send them someplace else where they have to call, make an appointment, go get takeoff time from work. You know, like, it just doesn't make any sense when I'm sitting there with them. I can fill it out for them. I, I know how to write and I know how to read the bylaws and I know exactly what they are, I know what the income levels are. We're already vetting them anyway. We're vetting their income, we're vetting their D D two fourteen form. It just doesn't make any sense. And I don't know, you know, like I, we work really closely, we work really closely with Jim. I love Jim. I love the whole group over there. Um it's not anything against them. It's not anything against any of the other ones. It's just access. It would be just so much more common sense if we just accessed it at the same time as we're already helping them. Uh they already have to go get, it's hard for them. If their car breaks down, they have to go get three estimates. And that's hard for them. One estimate's hard for them. We usually pay for their tow, because their car's broke down to go. We, we like to work with who we like to work with, because we trust the auto body companies we've been working with for the past five years. They say that car isn't worth it, don't fix it. You know, they, they, they're just straight shooters and, and they're honest and we trust them. So, you know, I don't know, we work really closely with V I P as well. They have temporary shelter for veterans. Um, they'll come to us often for the deposit, because we can do it fast. They need it fast. Otherwise, they're gonna lose the house, cause they don't have options right now. Like the housing market's so tight. So if they get an opportunity, they have to pay that deposit like A S A P. Um I don't know how they feel about it. I've never actually talked to them about it, or if they're even allowed to, but. They're filling out applications for veterans all day long. Maybe they wanna access the fund. I don't know. I mean, same thing, they're vetting them. They have access to V A. Um information. They can tell right now if they're, they qualify as a veteran. Um I mean, like, maybe it doesn't have to just be a nationally recognized veteran organization. Maybe it could be opened up to other veteran organizations who are ethical, um have good standards. And have common sense and are available. We have our phone with us twenty-four seven. We answer our phone on weekends and nights. We. I just got a call from a veteran needing a ride home from the hospital Saturday night. You know, like that's who we are. That's what we are doing. And it's not to take away from other organizations. When I came into this. I was, we were told, we were a joke. We were like a laughing stock, that what you guys are trying to do won't work. And it's flourished and it, and it, and that's not to brag, it's just to show it is necessary, that our group is necessary. And I welcome other groups as well. It's all necessary. Everybody's necessary. And not only the veteran organizations, but all of the nonprofits in our county. It's just, uh, we all work together to help and it's just necessary. But when the fund is sitting there with that much money, and just like, access is the issue, that's what my belief is. And so I'm just asking that I would be able to access it. And I will ask the advisory board. And I hope that they will agree and ask you if that could be possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Uh, I apologize for that emotional outburst. It's unprofessional. Yeah, it could be P S T D, but I'm still working on it. Let's get tough. We're talking about funds. You know my opinion on the auditors' funds. I believe there's twenty-seven million in that for homeless and the fees are going up every year. Okay, I take, I'll take a page out of my father's, uh late father's uh administrative book. They're, they're in control of his school, three hundred children. And teachers came to him for a request to bump it up to the school board. Same thing which you heard today, especially from the V A. Which is a tribute to Murphy's Law, if you go to the Pentagon in Washington, D C. Okay, this is my father's. He says, if I get you this, these funds. What are you gonna do with them? And you better use them if I put my neck out there before the superintendent. And I'm gonna be watching and some of his former teachers that are still alive. Uh-oh, here comes Mr. Dragich with his yellow legal pad. That's what you people do. And what happened in that workshop. This is what my instructors told me thirty-five years ago. Doctor Pearlstein, Ph D, M D. Pissed off paratrooper, cause he missed killing the Nazis during the war. Okay, you can throw all the money you want at it. He was with the Rand Corporation. And this is true, I've seen it. Boots on the ground, face to face, dead body to live eyes. If that person does not wanna change his ways from a substance abuse position. Then all the money in the world ain't gonna change that. And that's where the fourth estate was wrong with you and that interchange. They didn't check it out. They didn't research it. They didn't have Dr. Pearlstein as an instructor. That's all I got.
Any other comments? I'm not seeing any hands raised. See nobody other approaching? We will adjourn the public meeting. Thank you for participating. Remember, no meeting this afternoon.